Good morning, everybody. It's always, it's always hard, I feel for the speakers who are going to come up here and we're going to hear some great talks from our young postdoc fellows because you really are blinded in these lights, I tell you. It's really wonderful to sort of see you out there. And I welcome you to our annual event, the Early Morning CTN Postdoctoral Fellows Symposium. People are trickling in, and I'm always grateful to those who make the effort to come because this is one of our proudest moments, is when we can hear from and hear about the postdoctoral fellows that are funded by the CTN Plus. So, most of you may know who I am, but if you don't, I'm Marina Klein, I'm from McGill University Health Center, and I'm the National Director of the CTN Plus. And my co-director Sharon Wamsley is sitting here up at the front. And this is one of our proudest moments of the week, usually when we can sit here and listen to the great work that our fellows have been doing and introduce our newest fellows as they've just been selected. I myself was a CTN postdoctoral fellow back in, I hate to say when, I don't, should I say when, 1998? And it really did open me up to the possibility of meeting a network of researchers from across the country, always welcoming, always happy to support and mentor. And I still count among those early mentors Sharon and others in this room. And it's really, we're proud to see how many postdoctoral fellows actually continue in the field of HIV and STBBI research and have made excellent careers and are in leadership roles to this day within our network. And so, this is a flagship program of the network, and we're so proud to be able to continue it today. And many of the people who make that possible, including the CIHR funders, but our industry partners who have been together with us all along to support the postdoctoral fellows, I can see some of you out there as well, so welcome. So, today we have the privilege of hearing from three of our currently funded postdocs, and I will also announce the new postdocs that are coming in. So, let me just go, so, let's see if this works. I'm getting, yeah, it's not advancing because it's on a screen that looks like a Windows screen. Just the one with the pictures. I don't know, okay, I'll just, nothing's advancing anyway, so I don't know if it's going. So, Dr. Tanya Lazor, supported by a joint fellowship with Canfor, will be sharing her research on cannabis use among people living with HIV, and details of an intervention for mitigation interested community members. Okay, we don't have, unfortunately, we don't have the slide with the photos on it? No, I guess not. Okay, sorry with that. Our second presentation will be Hajar Mirazadeh's research. It's investigating characteristics of neural cells that may contribute to neuroinflammation and HIV-associated neurocognitive disorder. And finally, Monica Co-watches' research, which is supported in partnership with Gilead, is looking at the impact of age-related fluctuations in estradiol levels in women living with HIV. So, it gives you kind of a sense of the spectrum of research that is being conducted by our fellows, which is quite broad and touches on many of the populations that are living with HIV. And unfortunately, I would like to show you the photos of our new postdocs, but I don't see the photo slide. We have, fortunate to fund this year, six new postdoctoral fellows. And hopefully, some of them are here in the room, and you can meet them. If not, I really encourage you to find them over the course of this meeting and our next meetings, make their connections with them so that they can feel part of our network. The first is Ngose Joe Ichubelu, Alexa Kishan, Dr. Chi, I always have trouble with names, so you have to pronounce it, Chinaye Enze, Dr. Paolo Palma, Olivia Price, and Alex Wells. And I think we'll start, without my butchering any more names, with Dr. Lazor to start with the first presentation, and hopefully you can have those slides up, please.
Thank you so much for coming out so bright and early today. So, my name is Tanya Lazor, and I'm excited to talk to you about some of the work I've been doing as a CTN postdoc, looking at piloting an intervention for self-identified problematic cannabis use in people living with HIV. So, I have received funding, obviously, from the CTN as well as a CIHR fellowship in HIV, AIDS, and STBBI. I've also been an employee of the Hospital for Sick Children for the past two years. And we had a lovely ceremony to open the conference with a beautiful land acknowledgement for this ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. I also wanted to mention that this work was done on the treaty lands of the Mississaugas of the credit. So, I wanted to start off by talking a little bit about cannabis use in people living with HIV. We know that cannabis use is commonly reported among this group of people largely for symptom management, and there are several documented benefits of such use, including helping with stress, anxiety, depression, pain, neuropathy, appetite, sleep, the list goes on. However, there are some additional risks associated with higher frequency of use. In the US, we see dependence rates as high as 1 in 3. Here in Ontario, we've seen our daily cannabis use rates double since 2008. And daily use, we know, has the potential to introduce adverse outcomes. Research has shown that up to 50% of daily users can progress to cannabis use disorder, which is a chronic and relapsing condition characterized by cannabis use despite adverse consequences. Daily use has also been associated with other adverse mental health outcomes, negative cognitive and respiratory effects. And some research that we did recently found that 1 in 5 people reported trying and failing to control, cut down, or stop their cannabis use. So, I wondered why is there this discrepancy between intention and action? And thought this is something that we could maybe use principles of behavioral economics to try and understand a little bit better. So, behavioral economics incorporates principles from both economics and psychology to study how people make decisions, especially when they deviate from the purely rational or optimal choices. So, it describes decision-making biases that people make on a daily basis, such as loss aversion. And much of this research focuses on affecting behavior change in an economic context, but the field has expanded to various other settings. And one of these settings is in substance use. So, there's been several recent applications of behavioral economics interventions, such as financial incentives, commitment devices, norm-based messaging, and many of these have shown to effectively reduce smoking, cannabis use, alcohol use. And these interventions are also low-cost, brief, they're effective, they're easy to implement, so these could be a good option to look at. So, I wanted to kind of better understand whether, for people who have self-identified problematic use, or perhaps an interest in changing their relationship with cannabis, can we use behavioral economics strategies to change people's behaviors in some positive way when it comes to their cannabis use? So, there were a few things that we needed to understand first. So, this research is comprised of three separate studies. The first was a prospective cohort study that aimed to quantify and describe characteristics, cannabis use, and mental health outcomes of people living with HIV. The second is a systematic review of interventions that aimed to review behavioral economics interventions that have been used to reduce substance use. And the third is an intervention study for mitigation of cannabis use. And this one aims to conduct a feasibility trial of a behavioral economics intervention that can be offered to individuals with interest and with self-identified problematic use. So, I'll just go over to that first study first. This one looked at cannabis use trajectories among people living with HIV in the decade prior to recreational legalization in Ontario. This was recently published in AIDS Education and Prevention. So, for this study, we used about 3,300 participants from the Ontario HIV Treatment Network's cohort study. This is a multi-site clinical HIV cohort that has been longitudinally collecting data in its current form since about 2008 to present. So, we looked at past 30-day cannabis use frequency responses that were measured annually between 2008 and 2017. And then, we constructed longitudinal use trajectories and determined factors associated with those trajectories. So, here are the four trajectories that we ultimately identified. The largest number of our cohort, about 2/3, were in the low or no use group. This was a consistent group that had low or no use over the course of the study. You can see that in the bottom turquoise line there. The next largest group was the high use group. This was about 1/4 of our study sample. That's the light blue line at the top. And I should mention that the Y-axis contains our use, going from never in the past month to daily or near daily. I know the font's a little small there. So, that light blue line at the top is our high, consistent high use group. Then, the purple line is our increased use group that we found. That was about 4% of the sample, and these individuals started off entering the study with low use and gradually increased their use. And alternatively, we had a decreased use group, which was about 2% of the sample. We also identified associations between first-visit factors and use trajectories. There were several factors associated with increased odds of membership in the high use group as compared to the low or no use group. These included things like being aged 40-plus, being born in Canada, having black ethnicity, completing university, experiencing significant depressive symptoms, being a current smoker. So, what we learned from this study is that prior to recreational cannabis use legalization, about 1/3 of people in HIV care were consistent high users or increased their use over time, which suggests that perhaps interventions might be needed to help decrease the risk of developing problematic use. So, that brings us to the second study, which was the systematic review, which looked at electronic behavioral economics interventions for mitigation of substance use. So, we searched a variety of databases for this study between January 2002 and December 2024. We included randomized controlled trials that included an electronic or a web-based behavioral economics intervention. The primary objective needed to be substance use reduction, and the study had to focus on adults at least 16 years of age. We followed PRISM guidelines, and we used COVID-19s for screening and abstraction. So, our initial search results came up with a little over 10,000 studies, so we had a lot of studies to dig through for this. 5,600 were removed as duplicates, and after title and abstract screen, an additional 4,500 were removed, which left us with 401 to do a full text review of. Of those, 336 were removed, largely because the study type was not eligible. We also removed studies that only looked at contingency management as the intervention. And that left us with 65 studies to include. So, of those 65 studies, we identified 32 unique behavioral economics interventions. The majority of the studies focused on reducing alcohol use and were done in college or university students. The most commonly used interventions were personalized normative feedback. We saw this in 28 studies. This is a type of behavior change intervention that aims to correct misperceptions about the prevalence of problematic behaviors by showing people that their own behavior is actually atypical compared to actual norms within their same peer groups. We also saw a lot of text messages, which used framing approaches. We saw this in about eight studies. So, these studies would compare, for example, short versus long-term award framing or loss versus gain framing, to see if the way that messages were phrased would impact the amount that people reduced their use. And the third was an intervention called the E-checkup-to-go. This was in 11 studies. It is a personalized evidence-based online intervention that's designed to motivate users to make positive behavior change. It uses framing. It also uses motivational interviewing and positive psychology principles, and it provides a personalized feedback report after participants complete a questionnaire. So, there was quite a range of efficacy of the interventions. For example, with the E-checkup-to-go, nine of the 11 trials did show some reductions in substance use. However, those reductions did vary by things like age and context. So, this brings us to the third study, which is still relatively in its infancy right now. This was a pilot study looking at reducing self-reported problematic cannabis use among people living with HIV. So, for this study, we decided to pull forward the E-checkup-to-go that we found in that review. We selected this one because it's commonly used, it's already demonstrated feasibility and efficacy in other settings. And we actually did just receive funding from the OHTN to do this study, which has been exciting for us. So, the objectives of this study are to adapt an existing intervention, which will be the E-checkup-to-go, to reduce cannabis use for people living with HIV, and determine its feasibility by evaluating participant recruitment. And this adaptation will include working with a community advisory committee of people living with HIV and who have experience with cannabis. Our secondary objectives will be to explore other measures of feasibility. We'll be looking at participant retention, fidelity of the adapted intervention, and acceptability using quantitative and qualitative methods. And we have an exploratory aim to describe changes before and after the intervention, specifically in cannabis use, so changes in frequency of use, quantity, and product preference, as well as measuring depression, anxiety, and quality of life. So, the study's really divided into two phases. The first phase is looking at program adaptation, so taking that E-checkup-to-go and making it specific to people living with HIV and specific to cannabis. So, we'll be using a participatory action approach by convening a community advisory committee with socio-demographic diversity. We also will be working with the E-checkup-to-go developers. We've started that already, and they have made revisions for other groups to make it specific to other populations. So, for our first iteration, we'll be just doing some slight, kind of more obviously needed revisions. So, we'll be meeting with our study team. We have two community consultants on our study team, as well as our community advisory committee and the developers, to do some slight reworking for respondents who are living with HIV, adjustment to response categories for relevance, and adding in some regional, provincial, and national resources for inclusion in the feedback report. From there, we plan to host a co-design day, which will involve all of the same members aside from the developers, where we'll be able to sit down and take some time to look in more detail at the questions that are asked in the E-checkup-to-go and the feedback report that's provided, to make sure that it is sensitive and relevant. And from there, we'll be able to develop the second iteration. And that second iteration will, once it's created, will be sent out for people to take a look at, and any other additional changes that we may have missed or misunderstood can be reviewed. We'll create our third iteration. And from there, we'll just go back and forth doing some preliminary testing with the study team and the community advisory committee, going back to the developers for revisions until everybody is in agreement that we have our final version. So, then we will move on to Phase 2, which is the participant recruitment portion of the study. So, we'd be looking to recruit 30 participants remotely and in immunodeficiency clinics in Toronto. Participants are eligible if they're living with HIV, if they score at least an 8 on the QDA, which is the cutoff score for cannabis use, and if they express an interest in a study to learn a little bit more about their cannabis use. It is really important to note, I think, that the intention of this study is not to suggest that abstinence is the right answer for everyone. Instead, the goal here really is to understand whether there's an interest or a need for a resource that might be able to help people who may at some point want to change their relationship with cannabis in whatever way that means for them. I think this is really important for this group specifically, that this might mean things like cutting back, or maybe using differently, using a different product type, or maybe just learning more about their own use patterns. And this will be answered by our objective, which is exploring the feasibility of recruitment. Also, in our case report form, we will be asking participants about their goals for change in use. So, again, not merely abstinence, but perhaps looking at reduction in use or change in the method of administration. So, there will be three assessment time points for the study. Day zero is at enrollment, then we will have a second assessment six weeks post-day zero, and a third one at 12 weeks post-day zero. The first and third assessments will have a battery of tools that look at all of the additional questionnaires that I mentioned, so looking at anxiety, depression, quality of life. And then, across all three assessment time points, we'll be administering the E-checkup-to-go. So, as of right now, we have submitted our REB. We're working to convene our community advisory committee and digitize some of the questionnaires, and we are hoping to start Phase 1 in June of this year. So, thank you so much for your attention this morning. I just really want to thank my supervisor, Sergio Ruiz, and the study team, who's been so involved and providing such wonderful and helpful feedback. Thank you so much to all of the study participants across the different studies that I've described here today. And of course, thank you to the CTN for providing me with the support needed to conduct this research, and all of the additional funders. And thank you again for your attention this morning.
Thank you very much. And I'll start the questions. It would seem to me that your recruitment group are going to be people who are motivated to stop or have some reason to stop. So, how are you going to ensure that your intervention is effective? Where's your control group?
Excellent question. We're actually just doing a feasibility study this time, so although I will, as part of the exploratory aims, be looking at, you know, whether it was effective or not, because we're not powered in this feasibility study, our primary outcome is just looking at recruitment. So, are we going to be able to recruit 30 participants in 12 months? And if we can't meet that criteria, then that does perhaps speak to the fact that there isn't much interest in an intervention such as this. Maybe there aren't enough people who feel that they have problematic use or want to change their, the way that they use.
Hi, really nice presentation, and excited to see your data as it comes out. So, there's a spectrum as far as the why people use cannabis. Some of it is for therapeutic purposes, and some of it is purely recreational. Are you going to try to break those categories down when you're evaluating the use or misuse of it?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, we're hoping to ask at study enrollment, the reason for use, letting people respond with recreational, medicinal, or both. So, hopefully, at the end of the study, we'll be able to use that to better understand perhaps why some people's involvement looks a little bit different, or maybe we'll get a large number of users who only use it recreational, for example, I'm not sure. But yes, we will be capturing that.
Great, thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, and following up on that, if people are taking it for some sort of symptom relief, you actually may end up with a negative outcome, because if their symptoms get worse and they start using more.
From your earlier work, I was curious, because the graphs that you presented about the use categories, except for those two middle ones where there was a very stark decline or sharp increase, did you see any impact of, you know, legalization in terms of the use patterns that you have observed in this cohort? So, it's quite a very rich cohort, so it'd be quite interesting to look at that.
Yes, we did see, I'm thinking of a different study that we did with similar data, and I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, that we did see an increase in use. And I couldn't tell you the exact numbers, but we did see an increase in use and a change in the reasons why people were increasing their use. For example, after legalization, a lot of people mentioned that it was just easier to access. For example, they had more downtime, things like that.
Yeah, I think it's also, it would be interesting to see if it was, if that persisted too over time, you know, whether it was sort of like, oh, there's an opportunity, and then maybe it wasn't so good after all, or something like that.
Yes, that's true. We should rerun it with more recent data.
Yeah, thanks, really nice work.
Thank you.
Okay. And congratulations again on your publications, and we look forward to seeing the rest of your work. Thank you, great. Do we know? I don't have any notes. I don't know who's next. Can somebody put a slide up? Are you next? Down the rabbit hole, here we go. Quite an interesting topic, calculating the lifetime estradiol exposure in a cross-sectional study. So, well, that's not yours. Okay. Do you want to try and talk about down the rabbit hole? Okay, I will totally bastardize your last name. So, Hajar is going to talk to us about human infection and human glial cells causing astrocyte pyroptosis, activation of gastramin B and neuro-HIV. Wow, I'm going to learn something. Good.
Thank you.
Hello, and good morning, everyone. Welcome to my presentation. At first, I want to thank the organizer and CTN for giving me the chance to be here today. Today, I'm talking about HIV infection in human glial cells that cause a kind of cell that we call it pyroptosis. And this pathway is through gastramin B activation in people with neuro-HIV. We know that about 25% of people with HIV receiving antiretroviral therapy, they show sign of neuro-HIV, including cognitive impairment. In spite of using antiretroviral therapy, HIV persists in the brain, and the brain microphages are the main target of HIV infection, but we could find HIV infection in astrocytes. Neuro-HIV is defined by neuroinflammation and neuronal damage and cell death. What is inflammosome pyroptosis axis? We know that inflammosome is a complex of protein that can be activated by infection or tissue injury. Inflammosome assembly can activate CasP1, and active or mature CasP1 can target different kinds of pro-inflammatory cytokines such as IL-1 and IL-18. It could also target a family of protein, we call it gastramin proteins. And this family has different members, and the cleaved form of these proteins is the active form of gastramin proteins. So, the cleaved form of gastramin proteins, they move or translocate to the plasma membrane and induce pore formation in the plasma membrane. And at the end, we have kind of programmed cell death, we call it pyroptosis. This slide is coming from my last paper, and in this study, we tried to investigate the expression of different gastramin proteins in different neural cells. And you could see that gastramin B protein has expression in human astrocytes. We know that astrocytes are the most abundant cell type in the central nervous system. It exhibits reduced type 1 interferon expression, and they are highly proliferative. And in this graph, in this schematic picture, you could see that that comes from my last study. We studied the infection of monkeypox virus in human astrocyte. We found that human astrocytes are permissive to monkeypox virus infection, and this infection can activate inflammosome pathway. So, after the infection, we had active CasP1, and then we had the cleavage of gastramin B, and at the end, we had pyroptosis in monkeypox-infected astrocytes. But here, in this study, we want to know what's the role of gastramin B in people with HIV, especially people with neuro-HIV. For this study, we have access to archive human brain tissue from people with HIV, without HIV, and people with neuro-HIV. We also have access to primary neuronal cell culture that can be We also have access to primary neuronal cell culture that can be infected by pseudotyped HIV-1 virus. And for animal model, we use SIV-infected non-human primates. At first, we tried to investigate the expression of gastrin B protein in different group of people with HIV, without HIV, and with neuro HIV. We did immunobulating for full length of gastrin B and cleave form of gastrin B, and then we normalize these data to beta acting. And in the graph, you can see that the gastrin B full length expression increased in neuro HIV brain tissue. And also, in neuro HIV tissues, we have more cleave form of gastrin B that increased significantly. And to see which kind of cells can express gastrin B, we did immunofluorescent staining for all three groups. We used brain slices of these groups, and we did co-labeling for GFAP and gastrin B. We know that GFAP is an astrocyte marker, it's a protein that has, that's highly expressed in astrocytes. So when we want to label astrocyte, we can use GFAP. And then we did staining for gastrin B, and you could see that co-localization of gastrin B in astrocyte, I mean with GFAP, you could see in the picture, as a yellow color. So we have the expression of gastrin B in astrocyte. And if you see the neuro HIV brain slices, we have more expression of gastrin B in this group. Then we use human astrocyte primary cells, and we infected these cells with pseudotyped HIV-1 virus. And then we, after 24 hours, we fixed the cells, and we did immunofluorescent labeling for GFAP and P24, that is a protein for HIV. So we could find astrocyte that are positive for P24, and it shows that we have infection with HIV-1 in these cells. And you could see that uninfected astrocyte, they have a star shape, but after the infection, the cells are shrink, and the morphology of the cells are changing. Then we did ELISA, P24 ELISA, to confirm the infection, and we, in the graph, you could see that the human astrocytes are permissive to HIV-1 infection. Then we repeated immunofluorescent labeling, but this time, we use WGA, that is the marker of plasma membrane, and we use gastrin B. And we did this immunofluorescent staining just to find the localization of gastrin B before and after and before infection in astrocytes. And you could see that in mock or uninfected astrocyte, we have gastrin B expression, it's all in the cytoplasm. But after infection in HIV-infected astrocyte, we have gastrin B co-localized with plasma membrane marker, and we have it in the plasma membrane. Then we did cell death assay for this sample. We measured lactate dehydrogenase from, in the supernatant from infected astrocyte and uninfected astrocyte for different time points, and we found that after 48 or 72 hours, we, the LDH increased significantly. And it shows that we have cell death and pyroptosis in HIV-infected astrocyte. So based on this result, we could see that, we could say that HIV infection can induce, can activate gastrin B. So we have active gastrin B in the plasma membrane, and then we have cell death and pyroptosis. Then we did immunobulating for this sample. We immunobulated for the full length of gastrin B and cleave form of gastrin B, just to confirm the result that we got from immunofluorescent staining. And in the graph, you could see that the full length gastrin B expression decreased significantly after 72 hours infection with pseudotyped virus. And also, we have more cleave form of gastrin B after the infection. When we have pyroptosis, I mean, when we have active form of gastrin B in the plasma membrane, so we have, it could cause some pore in the plasma membrane, and we have the release of pro-inflammatory cytokine, and also, we could find the release of virus from infected astrocyte. Then we were trying to figure out whether this released virus is still active or not, and it can infect fresh astrocyte or not. We infected human astrocyte with pseudotyped virus. After 72 hours, we harvested the supernatant, and then we applied this supernatant to fresh astrocyte from different donors. And then we did immunobulating for these samples, and you could see that the released virus is still active, and it can active fresh astrocyte. And if you look at the P24, we could see that we have the expression of P24 in fresh astrocyte. And we also did immunolabelling for full length gastrin B and cleave form of gastrin B, and you could see that the full length gastrin B decreased after the infection, and we have more cleaved form of gastrin B. So we could say that HIV-infected astrocyte can release active virus. As I mentioned, I mean, the cleave form of gastrin B is the active form. So when we have cleavage, after the cleavage, we could find two domain of gastrin B. It's the N-terminal and C-terminal. But we don't know which domain is the cytotoxic part of the gastrin B that can induce pyroptosis. So we tried to make some vector with different domain of gastrin B. I mean, the N-terminal and C-terminal of gastrin B. And in this study, in this experiment, we use hexes because they don't express gastrin B. So we transfected these cells with the full length gastrin B, N-terminal of gastrin B and C-terminal of gastrin B. Then we did immunofluorescent staining for gastrin B and plasma membrane marker, and you could see that the full length gastrin B is in the cytoplasm. But for hexes that are transfected with N-terminal of gastrin B, we have the gastrin B in the plasma membrane, and it's like a ring shape around the cells. We also did cell death assay for these samples, and we found that the cells we transfected with N-terminal of gastrin B, we have more LDH release from these samples. And we could say that the N-terminal domain of gastrin B is a cytotoxic part of gastrin For this study, we use SIV-infected non-human primate. I need to mention that gastrin B doesn't have expression in rodent. So as animal model, we use non-human primate animals. And we repeated the experiment, I mean, it's the same as brain tissue from human, that we did immunobulating, and then we did immunofluorescent staining. We could, in this, in this experiment, we use non-SIV brain tissue, neuro-SIV brain tissue, and SIV-infected brain tissue. And we did immunobulating for the full length gastrin B and cleave form of gastrin B. And in the graph, you could see that the full length gastrin B increased in neuro-SIV samples, and also, the cleave form of gastrin B increased significantly in neuro-SIV brain tissue. We also did immunofluorescent staining for GFAP, I mean, for astrocyte, and gastrin B, and this result confirmed the result we got from human tissue. We could say that gastrin B has expression in astrocyte, and in neuro-SIV sample, we have more expression of gastrin B. So for conclusion, we could say that gastrin B was induced and cleaved in brain tissue from persons with neuro HIV and in non-human primate with neuro-SIV. Gastrin B cleavage generate a cytotoxic N-terminal domain that mediate pyroptosis in astrocyte. And this cleavage could be involved in the development of neuro HIV. Pyroptosis caused by HIV-enabled virus transmission to uninfected astrocyte with subsequent gastrin B activation. And this process of inflammazone activation and gastrin B cleavage could be considered as a therapeutic target for people with neuro HIV. At the end, I want to thank my supervisor, Dr. Christopher Power, all my lab members and collaborators. I also need to thank funding agencies, especially CTN, for supporting me with the postdoc fellowship. And thank you for your attention.
What a, what an incredible body of work. And to get a PNS first paper in 2024, I think is really outstanding, and congratulations to you. I'm going to try and make sure I understand. But if the, the, the virus that's produced in astrocytes can then be transmitted to another astrocyte and cause destruction through this mechanism, why do people with neuro HIV not just continue to progress and, and lose brain function very quickly?
The main reason it might be because, as I mentioned, astrocyte can, they are highly proliferative, and it's the only cells in the brain that can divide and make a new astrocyte. It might be one of the reasons.
Competition.
Yeah.
Thank you. I hope everybody appreciates it's very brave to ask a question. Your talk was, your talk was amazing. Thank you so much. So it's going to be a very naive question, because I'm obviously not very cognizant in the field, so thank you. So I've been interested with residual inflammation that stems from residual HIV parts of HIV proteins or HIV proteins in the setting of suppressed viral load. So do you think that parts of HIV, so only GP120, for example, only NEF, only TAT, could also trigger mechanisms such as the ones that you've shown, and whether that would be in the plans to look at this? Because there's been great data showing persistence of those HIV parts in people on suppressed art, and maybe it can induce neuroinflammation.
Yeah. Actually, I mean, there is no study about HIV proteins, I mean, the relation between HIV protein and gastrin B, but we could find, I mean, there are some papers that, also our lab, they show that when we have HIV infection in allogendricite and macrophage, macrogallia, they can release VPR, and VPR is neurotoxic and can activate gastrin E in neurons and induce pyroptosis. We also have some pathway that can be activated by HIV infection and induce gastrin D in macrogallia. So there are different pathways, but there is no study about gastrin B.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, it's really beautiful work. I just wanted, tying your MPOC studies and your HIV studies, is this a common pathway, maybe final common pathway for viral infections of the central nervous system? And, you know, thinking about where we often have challenges in terms of therapeutic advances, maybe neuro HIV currently isn't a major problem because of suppressed HIV with active therapy, but things like PML or, so JC virus is increasingly problematic in context outside of HIV, where we're doing lots of immunosuppression. So I'm wondering, if you're looking for therapeutic targets, is this a final kind of pathway that other viruses that infect the central nervous system might be using to cause pyroptosis?
For different viruses, we have, I mean, we have, I mean, different kind of viruses in the brain. And recently, we are doing some screening to, I mean, for different brain tissue from different groups, different patients, and to figure out what kind of virus can goes, can go to brain, and we are looking for neurotropic viruses. For example, one of the viruses can activate this pathway is Epstein-Barr virus, and these days, they are considering EBV as a, one of the cause of multiple sclerosis, and yeah.
Interesting. Thanks.
And just one last question. You, you noted that this may be a target for intervention. Are there any putative drugs out there that may target this pathway?
We could use some inhibitors, for example, CasP1 inhibitors to block gastrin B cleavage. We did some experiments, we used dimethylformate, one of these drugs that blocked interaction between gastrin B and CasP1, but I didn't present those data here, so.
Okay. So again, thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing the rest of your work. Thank you. Okay, and for our final speaker, now we are going to hear about Down the Rabbit Hole. It's from the Karma Collaboration, but. You want the clicker? You're going to click? You're going to click? Okay, perfect. Monica. Okay.
Thank you very much, and thank you guys for all hanging in there this early in the morning. I'm going to take you on a little bit of a jaunt down a rabbit hole following the data here. So I want to start by acknowledging that the work that I conducted as a CTN postdoctoral fellow was on the unceded territory of the Kosaleish peoples, and that is the Sloilatuth, Musquim, and Squamish nations. I also want to start a little bit on language before I get going here. So in this presentation, I will occasionally use the term women to describe people who were female sex at birth and were, and are cisgendered women. We want to acknowledge, though, that not all people who are born with uterus identify as a woman, and that not all those identifying as a woman are born with uterus. You will also see the terms female and male in this presentation as we cite different So let's start with the lifespan of women living with HIV. So globally, women live about five years longer than men, but women living with HIV only live about 1.3 years longer, so there is a gap here. And in Canada, more recent data has shown that women living with HIV live, on average, seven years less than men with HIV, and that's seen in the two different graphs you see on your screen there, looking at the gap in life expectancy for, in this case, a female living with HIV compared to a male living with HIV at 20 years of age, and then that survival curve on the other side there. Now, this disparity is thought to be related to things such as psychostresia and structural factors, and increased prevalence of concurrent conditions or comorbidities. But what about hormones? My talk is all about hormones. One of the questions was, is hormone dysregulation driving some of these health disparities? Now, women living with HIV are more likely to experience things such as prolonged amenorrhea, which is no menstruation for 12 months or more, premature ovarian insufficiency, which is biochemically confirmed using the hormone follicle stimulating hormone, or FSH, menopause at less than 40 years, as well as early menopause at less than 45 years of age. Now, all of these above things are associated with lower levels of ovarian hormones, increased inflammation, and increased risk of concurrent conditions. And when I talk about hormones and ovarian hormones, what exactly am I talking about here? Now, in pre-menopausal women, the primary hormones that we have here are progesterone and estradiol produced by the ovaries, and testosterone, that is produced by both the ovaries and the adrenal cortex. In menopausal women, this switches up, and we see declining levels of our progesterone and estradiol. Testosterone is still there, produced by the adrenal cortex, and our main estrogen becomes estrone, and it's produced by the adrenal cortex, adipose, and muscle tissue. So there's a changing environment going on here. But not all hormone is equal. Hormone travels through your body in three different states. The first state is free or unbound hormone, just as it is, and that makes about 1 to 2% of the hormone in your blood. The next way that it travels is bound to albumin, and that's about 30% of the hormone. Now, this albumin bound and this free hormone together make your bioavailable hormone, the hormone that your body cells can use, that's accessible to your body tissues. The rest of it is bound to its hormone binding globulin, and that's the remaining 70%. In the case of testosterone, estradiol, and estrone, that binding globulin is sex hormone binding globulin, and in the case of progesterone, it's corticosteroid binding globulin that takes this role. And this hormone bound to these hormone binding globulins is not accessible to body tissues. So why hormones and HIV are we talking about here? Well, sex hormones modulate inflammation and are altered by living with HIV. and are altered by living with HIV. So we do see that the hormones progesterone, estradiol, testosterone, and estrone, those first four boxes that you see in the middle of the slide there are decreased levels in those living with HIV. Conversely, the sex hormone binding globulin, the SHBG on your slide there, is increased in some studies of individuals living with HIV. And we don't know the situation currently for corticosteroid binding globulin. But these hormones are important for inflammation. So progesterone and estradiol are largely anti-inflammatory. So if you have decreased levels, you're losing some of that anti-inflammatory projection. Whereas testosterone and estrone are more inflammatory states. So my postdoctoral project was to try and bring some of this together and to look at the effect of hormones on cellular aging and comorbidities in women living with HIV. And in the interest of time, I'm just going to focus on that first one there, the aim one, and give you a story about hormones and the rabbit hole that I went down with this. So this study is embedded in the BCC3 project, which is a five-year women-centered community and clinic-based research project. It brings together women living with HIV, researchers, clinicians, and community partners with the goal of trying to understand and study and support women through healthy aging for women living with HIV. Now, this study is aimed to enroll 350 women living with HIV and 350 women not living with HIV that are aimed to be age and sociodemographically similar. This study is a society-to-cell approach to a community-based study. It includes social factors, cellular factors, and clinical factors, all coming together to try and understand healthy aging. It includes individuals that are 16 years or older, self-identify as a woman, so that is cis and trans-inclusive. And the exclusion criteria were being pregnant or breast or chestfeeding within the past three months. But you could enroll in the study after that time point if you so desired. So current enrollment for this study is that about 87% of the women living with HIV have been enrolled, and about 98% of the women without HIV. So that gives us a total of 646 women. The data you're going to see today, though, is on a smaller subset. It's on 461 women. And that excludes those that have yet to complete the second community visit, so we don't quite have all of the information yet, or those where the menopausal status is still unknown and being determined. So from that, 461 women, what does it currently look like? So age is slightly older right now in our women living with HIV compared to our women without HIV. About 45% to 50% of the women in total are menopausal. We do currently have a difference in ethnicity, and that is largely driven by a lack of ACB women in our control group, African Caribbean and Black women. But I do want to make a few notes about unique things to this cohort, the first being opioid use. We have, in both groups, between a 23% to almost 30% in our women living with HIV rate of ever opiate use. And this is higher than the general Canadian statistics for women, which you can see on the slide there, which is 1% illicit and 16% prescription. Also want to note that we have a 60% ever smoking and about 45% within the women without HIV, which is, again, higher than our national averages, about 10% for women. And then finally, our cohort has a high rate of ever having experienced homelessness, with 41% of our women living with HIV having experienced this, and 31% of our women without HIV having experienced this, which is much higher than our national average at 2% unsheltered and 14% hidden. So I said I was going to talk about hormones. Let's get into some hormones. The first thing you look at when you look at hormones is total hormone levels. That's all three: free, albumin-bound, and hormone-binding globulin-bound hormone. What we see for the binding globulin, sex hormone binding globulin, is no difference between our women living with and without HIV. And that story kind of holds true when we look at total hormone levels. So for estradiol, you're looking at the pre-menopausal women here, and there is no difference between those living with and without HIV. Sorry, I should clarify that living without HIV is gray dots in the graphs, and living with HIV is pink dots in the graphs, if you can't see the bottom of the slide there. For the estrone, we looked at only menopausal women. And again, there is no difference in total estrone levels between women living with and without HIV. And then finally, testosterone was all women together, so pre-menopausal and menopausal women. And again, no difference between those living with and without HIV. But what about bioavailable hormone? This is the hormone that your body cells can actually use. So what happens when we correct for this and determine what is available to your body tissues? Now, this was done by looking at the moles of the total hormone over one by the sex hormone binding globulin constant for each given hormone times the moles of sex hormone binding globulin. And what we see here is that in pre-menopausal women, those living with HIV have lower levels of bioavailable estradiol compared to the women not living with HIV. However, in our menopausal women, there is no difference between the bioavailable levels of estrone in women living with and without HIV. And that is also the case for testosterone in both pre-menopausal and menopausal women altogether, where there's no difference across our HIV status. But this only represents one time point, one hormone time point. It can't tell you cumulative hormone exposure across a lifespan. And this was the rabbit hole I went down. Now, why would we look at cumulative exposure? Oh, no, next slide. You were right. So estradiol and progesterone fluctuate with age, and they're protective to many body systems, including but not limited to our bone, heart, and liver. Now, this is just a rough schematic of hormone changes throughout the life. You'll notice there's no units here. We see rising levels of our estradiol and progesterone in puberty. They are highest during the menstruating of reproductive years. I do want to note that the cycle of the menstrual cycle is not depicted on this graph. You just see the high line there. And then they begin to decrease in perimenopause, being our lowest in that post-menopause stage. Testosterone levels also decline with age and are also protective of many body systems, including bone, heart, and brain as well. So all of these hormones are changing across the lifespan. But what about other reproductive milestones? When we look about estrogen and progesterone, there's other things that are occurring here. What age does someone start puberty? What age do they begin menopause? What happened during those menstruating reproductive years? Were they taking contraceptives, for example? What about pregnancy, live birth, stillbirth, miscarriages, breastfeeding? Lots and lots of things that may be happening with your hormones here. And then after menopause, are you using menopausal hormonal therapy? Are you replacing those hormones? So what's going on in your life? Now, why is this important? Why estradiol here? Well, longer reproductive lifespan, and particularly focusing on estradiol here, has been associated with decreased type 2 diabetes, a lower risk of developing dementia, reduced risk of cardiovascular mortality, and reduced hip fracture mortality and bone mineral diseases. So how do you do a lifetime estradiol exposure at a cross-sectional study visit at one time point? You've got to get a little creative with it. And that is the rabbit hole and the equations that we came up with. And I'm going to give you two different equations. The first is a series to be able to calculate lifetime estradiol exposure for cis women and trans men. And we start with what you often see in the literature, with the reproductive lifespan, that is age at menopause, or current age, minus your age of menarche. Now, there is, and you can see in the graph here, literature suggesting that, well, there is some relationship between age at menarche and age of menopause. There is heterogeneity, there's difference in the population here. We're not all the same. For the case of our study, we will use age of natural menopause, and that will be confirmed using the hormone FSH or follicle stimulating hormone. We will also consider age of menopause due to chemotherapy or radiation, as well as surgical menopause. So that could be bilateral ophorectomy, so removal of the ovaries, or hysterectomy, removal of the uterus. In the case of a hysterectomy, the age at menopause will be considered the time, half the time, between the age of hysterectomy and the average median age of natural menopause by HIV status in our group. Next, we will calculate the years of endogenous estradiol. So that is your reproductive lifespan, and then minus times of lower estradiol exposure. So that is times of being postpartum or lactating, or years without menzies. And for postpartum and lactating, we see decreased estradiol levels following delivery of the placenta. And prolactin, the hormone prolactin suppresses estradiol during breast or chestfeeding. For years without menzies, notably, this is years not due to pregnancy or polycystic ovarian syndrome, PCOS. And the lack of menzies before menopause or early menopause has been associated with lower estradiol. And if you remember, from the very beginning of my talk here, women living with HIV tend to experience more years without menzies than those without HIV. Then we will add things back in. So that is years of our total estradiol will be our reproductive lifespan minus the years of endogenous estradiol here. And then we'll add in years of pregnancy or menopausal hormonal therapy. Now, the majority of estradiol is produced by the placenta during pregnancy. And estradiol levels will increase up to 100 to 1,000-fold. So it's a level area of high estradiol exposure. The case of menopausal hormonal therapy in peri- or menopausal women, many women use exogenous estrogen or menopausal hormonal therapy, MHT, to help manage symptoms. And it is designed to approximate pre-menopausal estradiol levels. The last thing we're going to do is do that final calculation of lifetime estradiol exposure. And this is years of total estradiol over years of reproductive life. So for our purposes, we are making this a ratio. That is because we have lots of age range within our study. So if someone who is 20 years old has simply experienced less years of reproductive life than someone that is 80. So this will give us a ratio that accounts for just how much life you've had the time to experience at this current point where we are getting your data and you're enrolling within the study. And finally, the method of calculation for trans women. Here, we will use lifetime estradiol exposure as years of gender-affirming hormonal therapy over the current age minus 12 as our rough average for age at puberty onset here. So to wrap up and conclude, in our study, women living with HIV had lower levels of bioavailable estradiol, but not estrone or testosterone. In a cross-sectional study, though, it is challenging to infer the relationship between current estradiol levels and long-term health outcomes. So the calculation of a lifetime estradiol exposure, that rabbit hole, is going to allow us to estimate cumulative estradiol exposure across a person's lifetime. We can then use this cumulative equation for associations between lifetime estradiol exposure and concurrent conditions in the BCC3 cohort to better understand the impact of these hormones on healthy aging. So lastly, I would like to acknowledge lots of different people. You can see them all on the slide here. In particular, the BCC3 and Karma participants that I have had a chance to work with data from. And in particular, the BCC3 team members and the community research associates throughout my time as a CTN postdoctoral fellow. Lots of different specific team members I have on the slide there. Many community partners. I've listed the three sort of logos from the communities I've had the privilege of working with, but there's many more involved in BCC3. Funding, of course, and then students. One of my goals as a CTN postdoctoral fellow was to learn to mentor. And I've had the privilege of working with six different students. And I've bolded Kelly Matthews there because she worked with me on the lifetime estradiol exposure. So it's partly her work here that is up on the slides today. Thank you very much.
So thank you, Monica, for your presentation. And yeah, is there an app for that? Daryl?
Good morning. That was fantastic, really great work. So congratulations, really creative and lots of face validity. I was wondering about two things. One is, for the trans folks, have you thought about incorporating hormone blockers into the equation somehow? And then secondly, for all of it, have you thought at all about how you might look at like construct and criteria and validity? Is there some kind of external, you know, standard that you can compare this fancy equation against to be sure you're on the right track?
Yeah. Yeah, so let's see if I can remember both questions at the same time. To start with your first one, for the trans women. This is a study that's sort of just starting to get off the ground, right? So obviously, this equation is going to be able to be adapted as we see what the data actually, real word, looks like, right? And with consultations and all of that. So when you look at how the literature has done it previously when it comes to cis women and contraception, for example, what is often found is it's not included in the equation because most individuals change contraception throughout the lifetime, what they're using. What is often done is added into a model as a sort of yes/no variant, have they used contraceptions? That's sort of the initial thing that a lot of people look at. I know for myself, if you were to ask me, how long have you been taking this drug? I'd be guessing, right? So some of that comes into to how much bias is going to play when you say, how long have you been? And you're starting to ask many, many different things, right? So that's sort of when you look at the literature, suggested not to add too many of those things, like the hormone blockers, into some of these equations, but to add it as a separate covaried as yes/no and look at differences in your calculation based on that. So that's where I would start, right? And then looking at what we have in the data, could we feasibly add this without too much of a bias, right? Your second question, I knew I'd forget.
Construct validity.
Construct validity, thank you. Yeah, so this is another one that part of the reason, for the first equation at least, we have it broken into so many different stages, right? And it's not just one final equation. So the first one, the reproductive lifespan, that's what you see in the literature. That's what's most commonly used. So that we would be able to look at what else is published out there, right? And help validate some of that where you see the different age ranges. Again, when you start subtracting and adding things, right? You, each step of the way, we would be comparing that, what is the change in our equation? How is that compared to, we have the hormone levels currently, right? And two different papers that are adding and subtracting different things along the goes. So that's part of why it's a stepwise process to allow us to do those comparisons at each stage.
So I think your comment is right about the cumulative issue. And, you know, like hormonal contraception, they're all different, people have them for different amounts of time. Your older people are going to remember less well than your younger people, you know, what they had done. And so I think ultimately, what you are probably going to have to do is compare your cross-sectional number to your fancy formula and see, you know, whether you can discern the difference.
Yeah, exactly.